Okay, we're going to call to order.
I have to push the button.
Or not? Call to order the August 7th regular meeting of the City Council. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Brinkman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Valdez. Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Elrod.
Councilmember Fay.
Here.
Councilmember Schlafter.
Here.
Okay, will you please rise for the pledge allegiance?
Just sat down.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Council, any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved as published. Our first agenda item is opportunity for public comment. If you wish to address the City Council under public comment, please sign in on the public speaker form. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The City Council is not authorized by the Colorado Open Meetings law to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The mayor may refer the matter to staff to obtain additional information and report back to council as appropriate. Okay, also noting that we do have a number of public hearings this evening, so if you do wish to speak to any of those public hearings, there's also a sign-up sheet in the back for those. The first person on the public comment for this evening is Pam Chadbourne.
My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here in District One, and hence my interest in the downtown design standards, although I would have the same opinions no matter where I lived in the country. Because both the process for this and the product for this, to me, represent a nater for Littleton, is a failure of public service and a failure of process, a failure to care about what is the focus of the work, which is, let's make Littleton better and great in the future. Instead, what was done here is, let's make a document that serves interests that we hear behind the scenes, and very few people were involved in its authorship. So, the other comment I'm going to make about everything tonight is, National Night Out happened before this. If you did not have a chance to read emails today, I would like you to put this stuff postponing to a later date, because it's important that you read what's there. So, I'm going to point out to me a fundamental, it's more than a flaw, this is a betrayal in this document. And that is that our real design standards and guidelines for Main Street characters define one-to-two-story-high buildings. I still can't believe this happened, but Planning Commission approved one-to-three-story buildings on Main Street. Do you realize the change that that would make? That is huge. Now, through the process, it was claimed that there were no policy changes. That's certainly not on the view graphs. We were promised it. Historical Preservation Board was promised it. Planning Commission was promised it. You were promised it in study session, no policy changes. This is a policy change at the most basic level. The only discussion was, well, there are already three-story buildings there, and yes, on Prince Street, which was always defined as a commercial corridor, yes, there are three-story buildings there. And the other two are in the B2 block, and they are what Planning Commission itself caused to happen. I cannot tell you how much this disappoints me, and how, I have told you, I feel I am betrayed. All the downtown residents are betrayed. We were not represented on the technical committee at all. The people who were representative, who were there, were a downtown business owner and another downtown business owner, who I understand moved into one of the new houses. Where are us? We were not there. Everything is wrong about this, Council. Figure out a way, have the lawyer figure out a way to get this repealed and fixed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. There's nobody else signed up. Is there anybody that would like to speak at this point? Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public comment. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a single motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item can be removed by the request of a council member. Ordinance 30. This is an ordinance on first reading, amending Title VI, Chapter IV, Section 6-4-1, and 6-4-104, Pren D, of the Littleton City Code. Ordinance 31. This is an ordinance on first reading, approving administrative amendments to the Retail Sales and Use Tax Code. Resolution 40. Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding a 2018 Rappahoe County open space grant for field elementary school playground improvements. Resolution 35. Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding for the Collaborative Transportation Forum with the City of Aurora, City of Castle Pines, City of Littleton, City of Lone Tree, Town of Castle Rock, Town of Larkspur, Town of Parker, and Douglas County. Resolution 34. This is a resolution ratifying updates of the updated downtown design standards and guidelines now entitled the Downtown Littleton Design Standards. Resolution 39. This is a resolution approving the Designs by Sundown Subdivision filing number two, final plat case number FP18-0004. Resolution 36. This is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for the Collaborative Transportation Forum with the City of Arvada, Town of Bomar, City of Edgewater, City of Golden, City of Lakewood, City of Littleton, Town of Morrison, Town of Superior, City of Westminster, City of Wheatridge, and Jefferson County. And item ID 18-256 is the approval of the July 17, 2018, regular meeting minutes. Need a motion, please?
Move to approve consent agenda items A through H.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. To approve consent agenda items A through H. Ready to vote? The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
That's what we're voting for.
Okay, that takes us to general business. And we have two items on general business. One is item ID 18-266. This is a motion regarding a salary adjustment based on the city manager's 2018 performance This is a, we, the council has done their annual review of their appointed members, city manager and the city attorney. And the city manager, just kind of as a point of information for the community, received, he provided a evaluation of himself, and the council provided an evaluation back. And we determined that he was doing satisfactory work, that we were very engaged in the exchange of ideas that he was bringing, and a number of other comments regarding the outreach to the community, the work that's being pushed through, the comp plan, and those types of things. So, the council has gone through a process, and as the motion indicates, we are, would like to give the city manager 3% increase. So, I would need a motion at this time, please.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve a salary increase of 3% of the city manager's base salary.
Okay.
We have a second from Councilmember Driscoll. Ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, general business item 18-265. This is a motion regarding salary adjustment based on the city attorney's 2018 performance evaluation. And, I don't think we have a motion. Okay, there is no motion.
I just believe the manager's changed the number.
Okay. And perhaps there's no motion, because we also did the same with the review of our city attorney, and had evaluated himself, we evaluated him back. The city attorney is not being recommended for a raise at this time, because at the time that we went under contract with the city attorney last June, there was a condition upon the contract that he needed to, because he had not been past the bar in Colorado, because he was moving from Arizona, but that, at the point that that award was made, and he had successfully passed the bar, that he would be given an increase. And so, that happened about a month before the review, and so, that will be, will stand as his salary increase. So, we, there's actually no motion, because there's no action, but wanted to share that information, so, okay. Okay, so that moves us to our ordinances on second reading and public hearing. Our first, and I need the sign-up sheets.
I know.
Okay. Our first ordinance is ordinance number 23, series 2017, known as...
22.
23? Well, this is 23. 22.
Oh, I see.
Known as the Annual Appropriations Bill for all municipal purposes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018. Tiffany, did you, did you want to make a presentation?
Yes, good evening, Council. I do have a short presentation that I'll try to get through fairly quickly with you, if that's okay. Tonight before you, you have ordinance 22-2018. It's a budget amendment. We did discuss this at a previous study session, and it was a first reading on July 17th, so this is just a short presentation. The policy question you have before you is, does City Council support an amendment to the 2018 annual appropriation? A little bit of background is, I just want to remind everyone that the budget is definitely a planning document. Things change during the year, additional needs arise, we may not need something, something may change, which we'll talk about a little bit later. So, amending the budget is a pretty common practice across the state of Colorado and across the U.S. as well. We've previously had two amendments to the 2018 budget. Ordinance 42, related to the community development staff increasing a .5 FTE to a 1.0 FTE. That was in late 2017. And then, the additional budget amendment was related to carryover encumbrances, which I just want to remind everyone that that's a new process that we instituted in 2018. It's just so that council and citizens are aware of projects or funds that were not used in the previous year, that we want to re-appropriate in the following year, so that we can continue those projects or spend those additional funds. We broke the amendments into two areas. One are resources required for strategic imperatives, and the other are resources for some specific other items. I just want to remind everyone as well, strategic imperatives that have been set by council, financial sustainability, Vision to Comp Plan, and then collaborative relationships. And the next few items are directly related to these imperatives. A couple of things for the general fund is, we are requesting a budget analyst, and we're going to make that a two-year term position. $204,000, $250,000 is what's required over the two-year term. In 2018, the direct impact is about $25,000. The other position is a transportation planner, and again, this is a limited and termed employee for the same amount. And then, one thing that I do want to highlight that was not included when we discussed in the study session in June, is communications consultant. And what this is, is this is directly related to the Vision to Comp Plan needs that we have to communicate with citizens and with staff and with council. And so, an additional $22,000 is being asked related to that, and to the fire issue as well. The other one is impact fees. The transportation master plan was originally budgeted to be paid from the general fund, and after discussions with the attorney, it's, we're able to fund that out of the impact fees. A couple of other resources that I mentioned, the engineering development review for $200,000, this is to hire a consultant to help supplement some of the projects that are coming through the development review process. If you recall, we did implement engineering fees in 2018, so we do anticipate that we'll have enough revenues to offset these expenditures. The one thing I mentioned earlier is, needs arise during the year, things change. Recently, we had a storm, and I'm sure you've all noticed that Channel 8 is out currently. And so, we've added this $50,000 to be paid from PEG funds. Those funds are specifically only to be used related to communications through Channel 8. And that equipment's going to cost about $50,000 to get Channel 8 back online, so we are requesting that to be paid from the PEG funds. That's a new item that was added since the first reading. Some other resources that we discussed was the CNFI and mineral concept designed. We have a development that's coming in in that area, and so, it makes more sense for us to address that currently with the cooperation of that development, so that we're not costing money to the city in the future by redoing or redesigning things related to that. It also will improve our chances of getting a priority for Highway 85 or CNFI. So, we want to certainly start that today, rather than waiting and putting that off. The other thing is a traffic signal structural review. We didn't have a recent traffic signal pole failure, and that really brought to light to the city that we need to evaluate citywide our traffic signals, and so, that's pretty important for us to understand if we have any other issues that we need to address. And I'll remind you, those two added together were $400,000, and we're using funds that were not spent in 2017 to help fund this out of fund balance. The other one out of Capital Projects Fund is the armored police vehicle. Chief Stevens spoke to this at the study session of the need for the police vehicle. We currently have an old Wells Fargo truck that is in need of repair and replacement. It's about a 20-year-old vehicle and has over 200,000 miles on it, so it's imperative that we get that replaced for the safety of citizens as well as staff. Open Space Fund, the grant is actually related to the resolution that was approved through consent, field elementary, and the only portion of that that the city is actually funding is a 50% match. The rest is coming from Rappahoe County Open Space. Aladdin Promise Park, we just need some improvements to the ground cover there for those two playgrounds. The impact fees are police vehicles. The police department has added about seven new FTEs over the past couple of years, and with that, we need additional vehicles. We don't have a one-to-one ratio for police officers, so it's important to kind of increase our fleet to accommodate those additional staff. Because it's related to expansion or growth in the area, it is prudent to pay those through impact fees. The facilities building condition assessment, again, we're just looking at city facilities citywide to kind of get a plan going for the future as to maintenance and repairs on all of the city buildings, which could include expansion or additional space needs. So, again, a portion of that's going to be paid through impact fees. About $14,000, I believe, is going to be funded through the general fund. So, a couple of options. One, approve the amendment so that you can fund the programs that were listed. The other option is not approve the amendment and not fund the items included in this amendment. The total for these is $1.7 million. I'd like to highlight that the only impact to the general fund is $272,000. Capital Projects Fund is $705,000. And the other three funds listed, consolidated special revenue, open space, and impact fees, those have separate funding sources, and those can only be spent for specific items, which these items do qualify for expenditure from those funds. I'll note also that the temporary employees and the Capital Projects Fund $705,000 have been incorporated in the five-year plans that were presented to council in June. So, we did incorporate that with the anticipation of this amendment. Staff does recommend approval of this amendment to the 2018 budget. And if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Council, any questions? I have some questions for Chief Stevens. Okay, chief?
I was looking for you.
Hi there.
Hi, hi!
Mr. Stevens.
Yes, you made it just in time. Chief Stevens, by the way, has seen these questions before, they're no surprise. I'm answering these questions because I've heard from a few citizens who have questions about the need of spending this much money on an armored vehicle, about how much is it used and that kind of thing, so aiming to get at that with these questions. How many miles did the old vehicle have on it when Littleton got it?
I have no idea. So, the mileage questions, I know there's a couple of them on there, how many miles have we put on in the last couple of years, how many miles total? I think the important point of note is that this vehicle was donated to the city in 2000, the year 2000. Unfortunately, even though it was a Wells Fargo armored vehicle, there was no money in the back of it when we got it, but we retrofitted the vehicle in 2000.
With money?
I'm sorry?
With money?
Yeah.
With money?
But essentially, the vehicle, we've had a vehicle in the fleet for 17 years.
Okay.
And this is a replacement of that vehicle.
What incidents have the, has the vehicle actually been used for in, say, the last three years?
So, this type of vehicle would be used anytime we deploy the SWAT team. Most commonly, that would be for what we consider or call a barricade situation, which would be any type of call where we get information that someone may be armed with a weapon, and then, we will, we have a standard response that we will do for that, usually containing the scene, setting up a perimeter. The number of incidents of that per year in Littleton varies per year, obviously. We've had years as many as 22 deployments in one year, and we've had years with it, as few as six. I would say the average number of deployments per year for our SWAT team is probably 10.
And what about these incidents required an armored vehicle?
So, basically, when you're talking about the most likely use for this vehicle, those barricade-type situations that we respond to within the city, the most common use for those is, like I said, we'll set up what we call a perimeter, an inner perimeter, to contain the scene, to prevent harm from coming to the community outside of that scene, and to prevent folks in the community from getting into that scene. The armored vehicle, standard response for that throughout the country on, say, a residential barricade, most typical for Littleton, would be, we would put hostage negotiators and tactical officers inside that vehicle. And then, we would have that vehicle come to a point near the location where we have eyes on the location, and we attempt through a number of different means, including cellphone communication, hardline telephones, if anybody has those anymore, communication, and then also over PA systems in that vehicle to try to attempt negotiations to safely resolve a barricade situation without anybody getting hurt. The best way to do that is... The best way to do that is using an armored vehicle.
In what way would an armored vehicle have kept from becoming tragic what we saw in our packet described as recent tragic events in Douglas and Adams Counties?
So unfortunately, nothing could have prevented those tragedies from occurring other than bad people making horrible choices and murdering police officers. So these vehicles are not preventative, they're not proactive in nature, they're entirely reactive in nature. The information in that packet is provided to illustrate Douglas County, for example, the murder of Deputy Zach Parish happened less than a mile outside our jurisdiction. That scene where over five hundred rounds were fired from a high-powered rifle, five police officers shot, one killed, took hours and hours with a whole apartment complex under siege, basically. Innocent civilians were shot by this individual as well. Douglas County does have an armored vehicle, a Bearcat, the same model that we are requesting. They did bring that vehicle into play, and you can see it on the photograph that I provided, that it's out there, provided the tactical officers a safe location to help try to contain this incident. So these vehicles are reactive in nature. When these tragedies occur and good police officers die, other brave police officers have to come and resolve that situation, and this vehicle will allow them to do that in a safe manner.
You mentioned that Douglas County has one. Why don't we share with other jurisdictions under the assumption that a tragic event wouldn't be happening in all of these areas at the same time?
So I'll answer that one kind of in two parts. One is that there are several of these vehicles in the metropolitan area. Denver Police Department has two. Aurora has a couple of armored vehicles, including some military surplus vehicles, which I think you're going to ask me about. Douglas County has one, there's some up north, Jeffco has one, I believe. The main reason that I'm opposed to sharing a vehicle is just that when you need it, you need it, and you need it without delay. And it's, I don't want to gamble the safety of the community or our officers on the fact that it will be available. And that's for purchasing one to share. Say, let's say Inglewood and Littleton got together and decided to share one of these vehicles. I would rather know one hundred percent of the time that when we need this vehicle, that it's there for us and in our immediate control, that it's maintained the way that we need it to be maintained, that it's equipped the way that we need it to be equipped. The also, the other thing is, I think I lost my train of thought on the second part of that.
I think you've answered it.
Okay, I'm good at that, just keep going and going and going.
Going, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Why not get another used vehicle?
So again, I think the important thing on this is it is a big expense. I don't like to come to council with big asks. It's my sixth budget cycle.
Yet you do it.
Yeah, I know, I do. But it's a three hundred and nine thousand dollar vehicle. We believe the life of this vehicle conservatively would be twenty years, so when you dollar-cost average that compared to the life of a patrol vehicle, which is obviously being used quite frequently, we think it's still a good purchase. A used vehicle would, number one, there aren't any used armored vehicles out there because police departments keep them forever, basically, until they're obsolete, as we've done in our case. And so there, there's a lack of availability. Some of the reasons that we would not want to pursue a used vehicle are the fact that the maintenance issues that could come along with that are just kind of unknown to us, and we would prefer that we would go with a newer vehicle, it's much more reliable.
And last question is, I found an MRAP, Navy or Army surplus mine-resistant armored vehicle online for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Why don't we buy that?
So an MRAP, that's, there's a lot of, there's a couple of government programs out there that have been in the news, obviously, in the last few years, where police departments can acquire surplus military vehicles. When it comes to armored vehicles, the MRAP is currently the vehicle of choice for the military, so that's kind of your one option. The MRAP stands for Mine Resisting, Mind-Resistant Ambush Protected, and that's a vehicle designed specifically to withstand driving over landmines. So it's very big, it's very heavy, it's really designed to transport military troops in a military action, and too big, too unwieldy, maintenance issues, not good for an urban environment, in my opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing. Thank you, chief. And we have no one listed to speak. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Public hearing opened at seven thirty. Pam Chadbourne?
I'm Pam Chadbourne, I still live a block and a half from here. I understand, I think, the safety and defensive use of this vehicle. My concern is if it would ever be used in an offensive way. And I'm wondering whether there are other options to protect officers that are not able to be used in an offensive way. I don't think I've heard any discussion of that, and I would really like to know that because I'm against the militarization of police. I believe that the founders and framers of the country were against the militarization of police, and so, and there's strong reasons for that. So for two hundred years, we knew that gun control was not an unrestricted right under the Second Amendment. Since that's been changed, and I think in violation of the Constitution, police officers are more at risk than they ever had been, and that's horrible. So we need to get our sense back in terms of the Second Amendment and understand that the way we understood it for two hundred years is the way we should understand it now, in that we control guns, we have the right to, and we need to, with very reasonable use allowances in order to protect everyone, including our first responders. So that's part of the solution. But again, I don't want that to become a problem for civilians when police, local law enforcement, suddenly has the power of a military group. So that's my concern about this, and I am not sure I heard any alternatives discussed. So just wanted to put it on the record, I think it should be part of the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. Anybody else? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-two. Counsel, are there any additional questions or comments?
I'd say one thing in response to-
Counsel member Cole.
In response to Ms. Chadbourne. We have an unfortunate situation in this country that sometimes citizens get the kind of control that requires that they get a hold of weapons they shouldn't, they aren't legally entitled to get control of. And as much as I don't want to see us having sort of a paramilitary hell, if you will, we have to, I think, deal with the reality we're facing. And the last thing I want is officers who don't have adequate protection to deal with some horrendous situation such as has occurred in some places elsewhere.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, ready to vote? This is on ordinance, pardon me?
Motion.
Oh, we don't have a motion. Let's get a motion. That would be a great thing. Need a motion, please?
I move to approve the ordinance on second reading amendment, ordinance number twenty-three series of two thousand and seventeen, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill.
Second. Point of order, we've got it referred to as an ordinance twenty-two and ordinance twenty-three on our information. Could we just have a clarification from the city attorney, please?
Mayor, counsel, I think on the agenda, that's simply a typographical error, and this actually is, this is ordinance twenty-two, it's amending a prior ordinance twenty-three from the year before, but it's not amending the ordinance twenty-three that's about to come before you.
Thank you. So this is on the motion, clerk, please correct twenty-three to twenty-two.
No, 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 it's not, it's twenty-three.
You don't need to, the twenty-three is from the year before.
It's ordinance twenty-two is what we're approving.
Twenty-two, yes, that's correct.
So what was read was twenty-three, we want you to correct.
I'm sorry, the motion is exactly as he read it because what you're doing is you're amending-
I got you.
-ordinance twenty-three, two thousand and seventeen.
Gotcha, my bad. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Are we ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, let's see if I can get this one right. Okay. This is ordinance twenty-three, two thousand and eighteen.
You sure?
That's what it says. An ordinance on second reading, amending city charter section twenty-three regarding qualifications of council members and deleting section twenty-nine regarding council membership rules. City attorney?
Mayor, counsel, it's a pleasure to be here, and I'm going to present a few slides in general on charter amendments, then I will have a slide specific to each of these ordinances. I'll take my seat, council can conduct a public hearing, and then I'll return for the next one. And so with that, starting now, charters, city charters are essentially our constitution. They're much like the state constitution, and in fact, our charter gives us powers that the state, powers exist for the state. And as you can see, and this is more for the audience, for the public, constitutions are frequently amended. They are routinely amended because circumstances change. In eighteen seventy-six in Colorado, we didn't have such things as automobiles, airplanes, and a number of other things. And over that hundred and forty years, the Colorado constitution's been amended a number of times. The Littleton City Charter, our constitution, has been amended eight times since its enactment in nineteen fifty-nine. That's actually a bit unusual. If you were to look at other cities, you would find that charters have been amended more than that. Now, it's important here to note, this is a somewhat of a unique item in that charter amendments are a public policy decision of the council. The staff simply presents and acts as described, we provide the information to you, but this is not an area where the staff is involved in anything other than providing the information for council to make the public policy. So now moving on to ordinance twenty-three eighteen. This is an ordinance that would amend sections twenty-three and twenty-nine of the city charter. Both of those sections currently, right now, pertain to qualifications of council members, but they're in two different sections. The ordinary person would very likely not know that I need to look at two different sections. This combines all that material in one section. Why? It makes it easier for citizens and for those individuals using the charter to find that information. It's all in one place. Is there a negative? I suppose the negative would be that we're changing the charter, and like a constitution, you don't want to make changes any more than necessary. And with that, that concludes my presentation on this item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
So Steve, there's really no verbiage change, you're just moving one section into-
That's correct.
...another section, okay.
The only change to section twenty-nine would be section twenty-nine would now be deleted, and section twenty-nine has a reference to a court may ultimately determine qualifications of a council member. That's already in state court rules, it's simply repetitive in the charter and not necessary.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, so this is public hearing, we'll open the hearing at seven thirty-nine. Linda Newfinkie has signed up to speak.
Good evening, my name is Linda Newfinkie, and I live in the fourth district. I'm here tonight to encourage you to vote down these amendments, seven B to seven F tonight, particularly seven B. My main point is by putting the amendments on the ballot, you significantly diminish the possibility of approving South Metro fire tax and clogging the ballot. It tells me that council's priority is not to pass South Metro fire tax increase. The less stuff on the ballot, the more, the more possibility that it will pass. So basically, pick and choose and don't confuse the public, is what I'm trying to say. And your ballot amendments run against the intent of the voters and their previous, and the previous voters. Let me repeat, these ballot initiatives run against the citizens who voted and those that carried petitions and collected thousands of signatures to get on the ballot. Now you're disregarding and disposing their votes. Voters voted to have a charter review committee in two thousand and fifteen in which you, the council, have completely ignored. The recommendations to modify the charter should only come from the charter review committee and only the charter review committee as the voters intended. Use the charter review committee to recommend charter changes and request they bring your charter changes in front of the council. And council has had the gall to ignore the twenty or so, as the staff report says, recommendations from the previous charter review committee. Maybe the issue you should put on the ballot is whether you should abolish the charter review committee, but that, again, would be disrespecting the voters. This, again, is the will of the voters, thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing no, Pam? Pam Chadbourne?
I'm Pam Chadbourne, and I was obviously focused on other things, but I, now that Linda reminds me, boy, that, I remember seeing that folder in my files as I was looking for other stuff. Yeah, it's definitely true, and I went to those charter review meetings, a lot of them. And I've already spoken about the need to have good representation in the committees that are producing these products, and the failure to do that in the downtown design standards. The charter review committee is a way for the council to get advice from citizens, and it is good. Linda is totally right to remind us all of that. I endorse what she said and ask you to recognize it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at seven forty-two. Counsel, any questions of staff? Seeing none, are there any comments? Need a motion, please?
I move to approve the ordinance on second reading, amending city charter section twenty-three regarding qualifications of council members and deleting section twenty-nine regarding council membership rules and referring the amendment to the voters of the city of Littleton in November sixth, two thousand and eighteen election.
Agreed.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel, any comments? I'll make a brief comment regarding the charter review committee. That was a council-appointed committee, and they spent a lot of time working very hard on the charter, and they provided very sound recommendations back to council. And we did, in fact, take the recommendations, and in fact, one of the things that we added was that we included on the ballot when we placed these review, or the, some of the recommendations that they had made, that this group would be, would review the charter again, and I don't know, I don't recall that we gave a specific timeframe, but that there would be a periodic and often review of the charter by a charter review committee. And so we did endorse that, that was voted, that was approved by the voters. The changes that we are discussing this evening are not changes that, they are essentially changes that the city attorney is recommending as cleanup. They are not substantive as they would be, as maybe the charter review committee would have, were recommending. So these are essentially cleanup issues in the charter, and so I appreciate the comments about the review committee. However, I, I think that this is, what we're doing here is very different than what the review committee was doing, and we will continue to support that committee and their recommendations, and continue to honor the voters' decision to have us continue to use them, or to review our charter by the citizens on occasion. Counsel, do we have any other comments? Are you ready to vote? Okay, let's vote.
The motion, or the vote is six in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
This is an ordinance twenty-six, is an ordinance on second reading, amending the city charter sections fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-seven, and deleting section fifty-six regarding the city attorney. City attorney?
Mayor, counsel, this proposed charter amendment addresses four sections in the charter pertaining to the city attorney. The, and I'll just- The, and I'll just briefly summarize these. First, right now, in the charter, Sections 56 and 54 are, both address duties of the city attorney. This proposes to put all of the duties in a single section. Again, the benefit of that is, is if you're a citizen and you want to know what the duties of the city attorney are, you're looking at one section versus trying to look at two sections, and even perhaps wondering, what were they intending by putting it in two sections back in 1959? Secondly, the ordinance also reflects the fact that a couple of circumstances have changed since 1959. One, at that point in time, an individual to practice law in the state of Colorado had to take the Colorado bar. They could not become admitted by motion, which means meeting a series of requirements and having the Supreme Court of the state admit you. That now is the case if you have taken the bar in other states. So this simply amends the charter to reflect the fact that when the council recruits a candidate for city attorney, that candidate may be a person who's eligible to be admitted versus someone who's taken the bar and been formally admitted. The third section is, is to simply indicate that the use of outside counsel, that that will be set through the annual budget process. And again, that's how we do it, that's how you will see in my budget. There will be recommendations for the amounts for outside counsel, and that is done through the budget process. And then finally, the current charter talks about essentially that we would hire local attorneys as assistants, and that there'd be a preference to local attorneys. And this dates back to a time where in many cities, you had contract assistants who had their own private practice. The city of Littleton, with its current population, it warrants having an assistant or deputy city attorney, but it would not be a part-time position with a person having a private practice. And that creates a number of issues from an ethical standpoint in terms of conflicts. This simply recognizes that the assistant or deputy city attorney will be hired in accordance with the city's personnel process, and it removes that old language from the charter. The pro is, I think, again, it updates this provision, and it places all the information in one place. The con, again, it is a change to the existing charter. One point I will note is, when the Charter Review Committee submitted changes to the charter before what came to the council, there was a recommendation for approximately 30 changes. Thirty changes is an awful lot of things put on the ballot. The council ultimately put 10 on the ballot. There is still a number of those changes, this being one, that were not part of what the council submitted, but they are all in line with that in terms of just updating the charter and bringing it in line with current practice. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
I have one. Under Staff Analysis, number two says, remove qualification language, which is more appropriate for placement in the city code. Will that be done?
Counsel, absolutely. If that's, and this was talked about in the study session, the council said, we think the qualification language should come out of the charter, that's not the right place for it. Assuming that the voters of the city approve that, it would be my intent to bring back to you an ordinance putting the language that council feels is appropriate in the city code.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Member Cole?
I'm tripping on a piece of language in this. Council shall establish compensation for the city attorney. Compensation for special counsel shall be, okay, I misread something.
Okay.
I thought at home I understood it, and I'm too much partying, I guess it, at the outreach meetings, sorry.
No, no problem. Counsel Member Elrod?
Steve, I just wanted to confirm what I heard you say, that this was in fact one of the recommendations that came out of the Charter Review Committee? So we are implementing-
Counsel Member Elrod, there was a recommendation about the city attorney. I'm not 100% sure that they looked at it exactly the way that we did, but they did look at that section. So the answer is, yes, they looked at that section, that I don't believe this particular provision made the ballot in the way that this is proposed.
Any other questions, Counsel? Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open up the hearing at 7:50. We have one person signed up to speak, Lynda Nufinky.
Lynda Nufinky, the 4th District, I just want to remind you that you do not have a charter commission today, which the charter in Section 15, Article 15, Section 124 requires you to have a charter committee. And let me read to you exactly what the charter committee is supposed to do per the election of November of 2015. It says that the council shall appoint a charter review committee for the purposes of performing comprehensive review of the charter, making recommendation to the council for amendments, deletions, or other changes to the charter. Again, that's amendment, deletions, or other changes to the charter, and submitting such recommendations in writing to the council. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:51. And Counsel, any additional questions?
I have one. Mr. Kemp, in light of what Lynda just said, where do we stand?
Counsel Member Faye, members of the council, the charter amendment makes reference to the council shall periodically appoint a charter review committee. I can tell you in my experience in government, most cities do that about once every eight to 10 years. And they then have that committee make a comprehensive total review of the charter. The last one I was involved with spent nearly a year looking at a city charter from beginning to end. It doesn't, the provision that the voters approve doesn't say that's the exclusive means, and certainly I would expect 2015 being the last time. Eight to 10 years from that date, the council would do this again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Counsel Member Cole?
Comment on that. If we're rigorous every year, would we wind up ever needing a comprehensive review? Or would we, by piecemeal, every two or three years, discover that we got a weakness and we'll just correct that?
Counsel Member Cole, members of the council, in my experience, most cities every eight to 10 years do a comprehensive review. Even if they find that they don't need to do anything, they want to say, listen, we went through this process from beginning to end, and we want to satisfy ourselves that our constitution meets all of our needs. So even if the council amends the charter and the voters may approve it, my expectation would be that eight to 10 years from that time in 2015, the council would say, we want to satisfy ourselves about that.
Okay, so a follow-up. So suppose in a year or so, some citizens see something they think is weak, just as you think this is weak, would they be able to bring something to initiate?
Counsel Member Cole, members of the council, certainly under the city's charter and the Colorado constitution, citizens can do an initiative. And in fact, in 2015, in March of 2015, there were citizen-initiated changes to the charter.
I'm thinking something less complicated. Somebody sees a weakness, they know they can talk to you, I don't mean behind closed doors, I mean, you're accessible, and they come in and present something that they see as a, some kind of issue. So they could potentially raise an issue with you that you might bring to us, just as you have this?
Absolutely. In fact, I've done that in my career, and I would expect if a citizen did that, I would approach you in a study session, and that would happen.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Need a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance on second reading amending City Charter Sections 54, 55, and 57, and deleting Section 56 regarding the city attorney and referring the amendment to the voters of the city of Littleton at the November 6, 2018 election.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? Ready to vote?
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, this is Ordinance 27-2018. Ordinance on second reading amending City Charter Section 58 regarding establishment, appointment, qualifications, terms, et cetera, of the judge. City Attorney?
Mayor, Council, this amendment would address Section 58 of the city charter. What it proposes to do is really a couple of things. One, right now, if you look at that section, it refers to a judge of the court. And this really was at a time when the city was very small and it had a single part-time judge. We now have a presiding municipal judge and associate judges. This changes that term to a presiding municipal judge, which is the common term used for the presiding judge in a municipal court across the state. The second item is, if you were to read this section of the charter right now, it would suggest that the council appoints judges. That is not appropriate under separation of powers. The court is a separate branch of city government. What routinely happens in cities across the state is that the presiding judge will recommend a candidate that council confirms. And that's the proper process here. That reflects the fact that the court is that separate branch of government. Unlike virtually every other employee, judges are appointed for a defined term. And that's required by the Colorado constitution, determined by our Supreme Court. They have said, listen, judicial independence requires a defined term. In Littleton, that is a two-year term, and each judge has a two-year contract that does come before council for confirmation. Now, unlike other employees, judges can only be removed during their term for misconduct. In the case of associate judges, that would be done by the presiding judge for violations that would, what we call the code of judicial conduct, the judge could remove them. For the presiding judge, that would happen by council. None of that is being changed by this amendment. I would just note, for the presiding judge to be removed during their term requires a unanimous vote of the entire membership of council. It's the only provision I have found in the charter where you're required to have a unanimous vote. And that, again, I think is a recognition of the authors of this charter back in 1959, the judicial independence. And again, the pros are, I think this does reflect separation of powers and the way the court properly operates. It is a change. It would certainly be my recommendation to you that you consider this for placement on the ballot, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Member Faye?
I was just trying not to barge in and go first.
Oh.
Go ahead. Mr. Kemp and I had a conversation this afternoon, and I just want to bring up the, bring this up to counsel in case you have a concern about it, any of you. The way we have it in, in the proposed ordinance is that an associate judge cannot be removed by council, can be removed only by the presiding judge. I wonder about a situation where council might have cause, and that of course is required to have cause to remove an associate judge, where the presiding judge, for one reason or other, isn't comfortable with addressing the issue. According to what Mr. Kemp told me, that, that in the way it is right now, it'd have to go to the Supreme Court to remove that judge?
Yes.
And I wonder if, if council is interested in considering the possibility of making it so that we, with a unanimous vote, could do that.
Mayor, Council, that's correct. Independent of our charter, if a judge were to commit an act of what we call a violation of the code of judicial conduct, which is a whole set of rules that govern the conduct of judges, the Supreme Court in the state has a entity that regulates judges, and they could actually remove that judge from office. That is generally, I'll be honest, they generally do defer to the local government to deal with that, because again, they recognize the separation of powers there. The issue I think that it poses with council removing an associate judge is that all of the other employees of the city, council does not become involved with. They either work under the city manager, city attorney, and this, now, the suggestion I would say to council is, is that if you had a judge, a presiding judge, who failed to address judicial conduct of an associate judge, they themselves would be in violation of the code of judicial conduct, and council could address that with the presiding judge. My biggest concern here, and again, this is a policy decision for the council, but I do want to emphasize the separation of powers and the need to maintain the independence of the judiciary. That's an important value we have in our society and culture. And I would be concerned if council began to get into the issue of addressing associate judges rather than having the presiding judge do it.
Thank you.
Can, just to confirm then, can the presiding judge terminate or take action on the associate judge?
They could during the two-year term if there was misconduct. They couldn't simply just say, oh gee, I don't like the associate judge because I just don't like him, so out you go. It has to be an act of cause.
Okay, so the authority does exist with essentially the presiding judge?
It rests with the presiding judge whom you appoint.
Any other questions? Counsel Member Cole?
So, I mean, I've been on council almost 11 years. I've been somewhat aware of city stuff before that. I'm not aware that we've had a problem with the current process.
Mayor, Council, I don't think that you have had a problem. It is, I will say that the language in the charter doesn't really reflect your process. You've correctly done this, in that the presiding judge has always brought judges to you for confirmation. But that's not really what your charter says. So really, we're just bringing your charter current to what you actually do. And you have, but to answer your question, no, you, I don't see, in the tenure I've had here, you've not had a problem.
Any other questions or comments?
So hold while I read the strikeout. So if in the, this is the strike, this proposed strikeout, if in the discretion of the council more than one judge is necessary, one or more additional judges may be appointed. Now, we don't just come up with, hey, we need more judges. In the past is my understanding, the judge comes and says, you know, I need somebody else, and I need somebody more else. And so then we, he brings people and we decide whether we're gonna appoint them. Does that confirm them?
Counsel Member Cole, that's exactly how this works, is that through the budget process, if the presiding municipal judge said, gee, I need four pro temps instead of three, then he would recommend and ask for the funding for the additional pro temp judge in his budget to provide for that. Now, he just can't go out and appoint pro temps and say, well, I want four pro temps, but the council's only provided funding for three. That, the discretion of the council is, you're going to address that through the annual budget process.
You haven't persuaded me that we need to change it, so, but you don't need to persuade me, so.
Counsel Member Schlechter?
Let's say the, the process that Counsel Member Cole is asking about is mentioned in Section 58B. You're just moving the location, changing it from being appointed to the municipal judge is appointing. Is that correct? That's all it is?
Yes, essentially, the change here is simply the title of the judge, and there is no change in terms of recommended, that, in terms of the authority of council to create more judges through the budget process. That's reserved to council in the budget process.
Any other questions? Thank you. So this is a public hearing, we'll open at 8:04, and Lynda Nufinky has signed up. Okay, anybody else? Carol Breejett?
Mr. Kemp has said that one of the reasons for doing this is to, because of separation of powers. But we still have a council that appoints a judge. We're just now letting the judge appoint the associate judges. So if you're really concerned about a separation of power, it seems to me that perhaps we go to an elected judge. I think you either have to decide, is it truly a separation of power issue? And if it is, then you shouldn't appoint any judge. But that's really not an issue. And I don't think it is. I prefer to have my council select our judge and our associate judges. I think there's value that comes in you interviewing that person and being asked, you know, asked questions and get a response rather than having someone just put in front of you that you approve. you that you approve. So, just a curiosity about the separation of power.
Thank you. Any other comments? Pam?
I'm Pam Chap, and I live a block and a half from here. And actually, I didn't think this was controversial, but the separation of the three forms—sections of government is essential. I don't want council to appoint any more than the presiding judge. I don't want council to do that. My trust is eroded, and I don't want council to have any more power than it has now, as the founders and framers did. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 8:06. Council. Councilmember Fay.
Mr. Kemp, could you address Ms. Brizak's comment about the—because I wondered about this too, about the separation, yet council appoints the judge, and I just want to know how that works.
Councilmember Fay, members of the council, this is actually fairly common. If you look at the Colorado Supreme Court, who makes the appointment? The governor does off of a list that is submitted to the governor that they must appoint from. But the governor makes that appointment. Here, certainly, council at any point in time could create a process similar to that where you would have an appointments board. This doesn't foreclose any of that. But what it does recognize is, is unlike any other position in the city, this—the charter right now, and I think wisely so, requires this unanimous vote. It recognizes, and unlike the manager and the attorney who work at the pleasure of the council, the presiding judge has a defined term. Everything in your charter is focused around this being an independent, separate branch of city government.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
So, then, the presiding judge would be evaluating the ones he appoints?
That's correct.
And if council then replaces, either somebody retires or whatever, the new judge could theoretically clean slate?
Only when their terms expire. The new judge could not say, oh, I want to get rid of all my associate judges who are one year into their term. They would have to wait.
They have contracts then.
They have contracts, and they'd have to wait till the term expires.
But I'm assuming he would—he or she would evaluate his or her judges, so there would, I assume, be something in the contract that would have something to do with malfeasance or whatnot.
Councilmember Cole, members of the council, that's absolutely the practice for the judge, to evaluate the associate judges. I know Judge Feldman takes that responsibility extremely seriously.
Thank you. Any other questions? Can I need a motion, please?
I move to approve the ordinance on second reading amending the city charter, Section 58 regarding establishment, appointment, and qualifications, term, et cetera, of judge, and referring the amendment to the voters of the city of Littleton on the November 6, 2018 election.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Council, are you ready to vote?
The vote is—the vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Okay, this is ordinance 28, an ordinance on second reading, amending the city charter, Section 117 regarding revocable licenses and deleting Section 118 regarding revocable permits. City Attorney.
Mayor, members of the council, currently in the charter, we have references to revocable permits and revocable licenses. What these are, these are administrative functions where we grant an entity the right to use a portion of our right of way, subject to all of our rules and requirements, for a limited purpose. Unlike an easement, they receive no property interest or anything. They simply have a very limited right to use our right of way. Now, we also have provisions in our city code where we do this. The trouble with it is, our city code and the charter are in conflict, and the charter itself has these done as a council action. If you—the current language in each case has the council doing this. Generally, I can tell you, in every jurisdiction I'm familiar with, revocable permits are done as an administrative action. The council authorizes the city manager to issue those by enacting an ordinance. What this does is really makes—it combines Section 117 and 118 into a single section because they're both dealing with the same thing, so we put them in one place. Secondly, it changes the provisions so that the council, by ordinance, can authorize the city manager to issue these. And it now makes the charter and the city code consistent, so the languages are going to be the same. Obviously, the pro is, is I think, making it consistent, having it all in one place, and delegating this administrative authority to the city manager is consistent with your charter. It is a change. That would be the only con. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions that the council might have.
Council, any questions? Seeing none? Thank you, City Attorney. We'll open the public hearing at 8:11, and we have no one signed up on the roster. Is there anybody interested in speaking on this? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing at 8:11. And I need a motion, please.
I move to approve the ordinance on second reading amending the city charter, Section 117 regarding revocable licenses and deleting Section 118 regarding revocable permits, and referring the amendment to the voters of the city of Littleton at the November 6, 2018 election.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, any discussion? Are you ready to vote?
Okay, let's vote. The vote is six in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, this is ordinance 25, 2018, on second reading, amending the city charter, Section 27 regarding council meetings. City Attorney.
Mayor, Council, this amendment is more substantive than the prior amendments. The prior amendments were all amendments just to really, what I would describe as cleaning up the city charter. This amendment addresses an issue in the city charter, which is, the city charter limits executive sessions, which executive sessions are closed sessions of the city council, and it limits them to only two purposes. Other than that, all actions of the city council must be open to the public. Now, I think there's a couple of points that really are important to understand. The city council, regardless of what the charter says, cannot act and take formal action except in an open session like you're doing right now. None of these proposed amendments would authorize that. For example, I received a citizen comment regarding that a council should not make decisions to buy property in an executive session. Absolutely correct. You're not permitted to do that. You would have to approve the purchase agreements. You'd have to approve all of the documents in a formal, open session, just like you're having right now. The second—that now, have there been some cities that have done that in the state? Absolutely. Are those cities getting lots of negative attention? Yes, because state law doesn't allow you to do that, nor would any of these charter changes allow you to do that as well. So I want to just spend a few minutes very quickly going through each of these and what they would do and how they change the charter. First, the charter right now allows for executive session to review records that are confidential by state and federal law. The problem with that is, there's a lot of records that are confidential by state and federal regulations, not law. Law, from a lawyer's standpoint, is a very specific thing. It means a statute. A regulation is something different. And the difficulty is, is that when you look at the Colorado Open Meetings Law, our Supreme Court has said that you interpret that extremely strictly. You don't, in essence, create extra powers to have executive sessions. So this would allow for that, as well as specialized details of security arrangements. Sometimes we make—we have security arrangements. The classic is, I'm familiar with the city that—in Missouri, where they had an actual shooting in their council chambers. One of the things they discussed was, what would be the security arrangements that we would undertake in the event you had that kind of terrible situation? And how do you deal with those types of issues? Amending subsection 3, this would add a new subsection, and it would allow executive sessions to provide instructions to staff on negotiations pertaining to the purchase and sale of property. Where this becomes important is, is that—I can tell you my career, I've never walked into a council with a purchase agreement for the purchase of real property or a sales agreement for the sales of city property. There has always been negotiations back and forth. There has been discussions, if it's the city purchasing, sellers will say, we want this, we want that. If it's the city selling, purchasers will say, well, we want to pay less, and the city will say, we want to pay more. And right now, the current process doesn't allow us to come and get instruction. About—the only way we can get instruction is, I can talk to each of you as an individual. You act as a body. You don't act as seven individuals. You act as a body, and sometimes, I would submit, it's a benefit to the city to get that instruction from the body as a whole as to what your position is in those negotiations. Now, the important thing to note here is, as the charter amendment provides, all actions pertaining to such negotiations must occur in an open session. You can provide instruction to your negotiators, but you can't approve a purchase, you can't approve a sale, except in a formal, open session like you're having right now. The next subsection is to allow executive sessions to receive legal advice from the city attorney. And again, as the city's lawyer, I represent you as a body. Now, you each are individual elected officials, and sometimes you perform duties. But the ethical rules for lawyers that we live by state, I represent you as a body, as an organization. Now, this would allow you to have executive sessions to receive legal advice from the attorney for the city. It's limited only to legal advice. You can't in essence say, well, we want to talk about something else, and we'll just bring the lawyer in the room and call it legal advice. This does not allow for that. That would be a violation of this provision. You can't have other people in the executive session, except the city attorney, city manager, and a person necessary to provide you factual information in formulating a legal question. I am aware that there have been cities that have said, oh, we want to talk about stuff under legal advice and have a whole crowd of people in there. This does not allow for that. It limits it solely to legal advice. Also provides, you can't take action on that legal advice in executive session. You must come back out in a formal meeting just like this if you're going to act on that legal advice. The only purpose is, is to talk to your lawyer and be able to talk to your lawyer in a very open and frank way. Because sometimes, you will have very open and frank questions, and there needs to be that open discussion. And finally, the general substance of that request must be on the public agenda. There have been some cities in this state that will say, oh, this executive session, legal advice from the city attorney. That would not qualify here. You would need to put in something that talks about the general substance, such as, legal advice from the city attorney on the claim of Smith against the city in Littleton. Something that tells the public, okay, what's the substance of the legal advice being asked for? Because that's not privileged under the rules that attorneys have for practicing. And finally, a new subsection 5 to allow for executive sessions pertaining to the recruitment, employment, evaluation, and discipline of council-appointed employees. Only council-appointed employees. City attorney, city manager, and presiding municipal judge. No other employees. Those three employees you appoint, you could have an executive session for those purposes, recruitment, employment, evaluation. But our formal actions, just like the formal action you took tonight, would have to occur in an open session. You could not do those in an executive session. And nothing in this charter amendment would preclude you from having things such as a meet and greet. Many cities, when they hire these employees, will have a public meet and greet, where come in and meet the candidates, or come in and ask questions of the candidates. None of that would be foreclosed by this, but this would allow you to have executive sessions for those purposes. And again, all formal actions would have to occur in an open session. So what are the pros and cons? Obviously, I think the first pro is, the council is a body is giving instruction. I can tell you, it's very, very difficult, as a lawyer, to get instruction from each of you as individuals. Because I'm missing the most important component, is the interaction of you as a body. Because I don't have that opportunity to get that interaction. Secondly, the pros I would submit of this charter amendment, unlike state law, is that it requires more public disclosure about the executive session than state law. And all of you hear the same information. Again, I won't speak for the manager when he talks with you, but it's very difficult because even when I talk with you one-on-one because you're not all together, and everyone processes information differently because we're all different people, I'm not sure that everyone has the same understanding. Where if you can have this kind of executive session as a body, you can have that understanding. Now, obviously, it does change the current provisions in the charter. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I would be pleased to answer any questions that the council might have.
Councilmember Schlechter.
Do any of these proposed changes contradict anything in the Colorado sunshine law?
Okay.
Do any of the proposed changes for this amendment to our charter contradict any—
No. There's no contradiction in state law. They're, in fact, more restrictive than state law.
Thank you.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Is this the first time we've had this in the city?
Uh, Councilmember Driscoll, the city used to follow the state statute. There was a citizens' initiative that limited executive sessions to only these two items. And this is really, I would submit, attempting to find a balance between the state law, which is much broader than this, and the current practice.
Councilmember Cole.
It would seem to me possibly the deputy city manager be—should be included.
Councilmember Cole, we could certainly do that. I would submit that if the council felt that—the council does have the ability to have anyone in that executive session for purposes of legal advice if they needed a factual basis. Now, in the other cases, such as real property, the deputy city manager might be your negotiator. The legal advice, the reason it's that restrictive, has been, quite honestly, in drafting this, there's a well-known city in this state, which we'll go unmentioned, that allows a number of people in its executive sessions, and I think that does pose a problem for legal advice. If it's—it should be the lawyer, your manager, and then, if there's somebody else, it's because council says, we need them because we need to have a factual basis.
Hmm.
But for other reasons, you could have the deputy manager in there. Just the legal advice has that limitation.
It just seems to me that sometimes council wouldn't know that they might really need him, and maybe the city manager wouldn't know exactly because he can't know everything about whatever, and they work in tandem. Or, maybe I'm wrong, the deputy city manager kind of oversees certain things. kind of oversees certain things. So for him to have to translate all that to the city manager, it just seems to me easier to include him.
Counsel, that certainly is a policy choice. That if council wishes to address it, could. I would tell you, in my working with city managers over my career, when we've needed to have assistance, the deputies in there, they always were, because they always had factual information, that the manager or the attorney generally felt the council needed. But that's entirely a policy choice for the council.
Councilmember Alrod.
Can you also speak to that while we are in, while a council is in an executive session, there is still recording of that session going on? It is documented, and then does become accessible at a later time?
Yes, Councilmember Alrod.
For transparency.
Part of the citizen initiative was to require recording of all executive sessions, and that is left unchanged. Unlike state law, that doesn't require recording of executive sessions pertaining to legal advice. So here, again, the Littleton provisions are going to be more restrictive than the existing state law.
Does anybody else have a question? Councilmember Fay.
What percentage of the voters voted for the way we have it right now? Do you know?
I, I don't know. Perhaps the city clerk does.
It's about 70.
Seventy percent of the voters voted for the current. It makes me feel like we might be disrespecting what the voters had to say. Seventy percent is really high. By putting it in front of them, that we think they ought to reconsider their decision. That makes me uneasy. How do you feel about that?
Mayor, Mayor Counsel, I think that is purely a political judgment. I, I don't think it'd be appropriate for me, as the lawyer, to do that. So I'm...
Good one.
That's truly a political question.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, so this is a public hearing. We'll open the hearing at 8:28. And I have four people signed up. Paul Bingham.
I'm Paul Bingham, 236 West Delaware Circle. I'll let Wendy finish her job there.
You go ahead. You're timed to go.
Okay. Good evening, Counsel. Hope you all had a fine national night out tonight. Item 7F on tonight's agenda proposes several substantial changes to Littleton City Charter, section 27, having to do with executive sessions of city council. That's you folks. This is not cleanup, as the mayor has just described. This is definitely more substantive. And this addresses Counsel Driscoll's question a minute ago. The existing section 27 of the charter was last changed by a citizens' initiative in 2013. Its present form was approved by the citizens of Littleton in a vote that passed by 70%. Thank you for asking that question, Councilman Fay. This was done in order to cut down on an excessive number of executive sessions being conducted at that time by our city council. Now, as approved by the citizens of Littleton in 2013, by 70%, there are two reasons for the city council can meet in non-public executive sessions. They are, one, matters required by state and federal law; two, legal action concerning the city already filed in court of law. The proposed ordinance would add a number three, purchase or sale of property, real and personal, receiving legal advice on specific legal questions, recruitment, evaluation, and discipline of council employees. My request tonight is, of you folks, do not approve these changes to this proposal as it is. It goes against the express wishes of the citizens. As described previously, that was 70% of the citizens that signed up voted for the existing situation. Please, number one, vote it down entirely, or number two, amend the proposal to only add item five to the charter, section 27. It has been demonstrated that item five...
Paul, you need to wrap it up. Your time is up, Paul.
Okay. The details as to why I'm asking all this are in detail on the back of this page that I gave you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Next is Pam Chadbourne.
I'm Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here. I sent a long email about this, and if you have not had the chance to read that, what I'm going to ask you to do is continue to a later date. I'm uncertain about the timing for the election, but it shouldn't have gone this late. Doesn't have to be done this year. It can be done another year. But you should read what I sent. So we need to keep executive sessions targeted and limited, except number five. The personnel issue is, without a doubt, of higher benefit to us to have it in private than we get any benefit from restricting it. Otherwise, reject the number three, number four, and the addition of number one. Or with number one for security and investigations, narrow it and target it. And I think what I wrote is something like, if there's a concurrent, real-time, violent situation, in which there is a likelihood which, of a publicized session making the situation worse, then have an executive session. Make it targeted, make it specific. These broad, general things are exactly what the voters did not want. There will be consequences to council. I'm not telling you that from me. I carried petitions for this and another one. People were eager to sign restrictions on the right for executive sessions, folks. And I'm going to tell you, with the development in Littleton and the dissatisfaction with it, there will be consequences for council members at elections, and voters will remember. And that's not something I have any control over. I'm reporting to you what I know, what I hear from people. Number three and number four, I have a bunch of arguments about them in my email. But the, I understand totally that there's a public process for action on these. That's not the point. By the time it gets that far, there's an investment of time and effort and negotiation behind the scenes, which the public has not been privy to. And that investment makes public process and public comment not valued by the decision-makers. And I already know that from the way it's gone for the past five years. So to allow an executive session to set that up and proceed further down the road invalidates our public comment. That is not a reason to just pass these. So please don't do number three or number four. If you do one, target it and limit it.
Thank you, Pam. Your time is up.
And number five, only.
Thank you.
And don't act tonight if you can't read the emails. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. Next is Stu Maher.
Counsel, Stu Maher, 5645 South Crocker Street, Council District Two. I'm not here to threaten you or warn you about consequences. I'm here to urge you to embrace and pass this ordinance amending the city council to reinstate executive sessions as a matter of course, in your responsibilities of carrying out the best interests of our community. From 1993 to 2001, I served on the city's planning commission. I served a term, a two-year, at-large term on the city council from 2001 to 2003, and currently serve on the city's Public Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, South Metro Housing Options. I have also served on a number, well, several, public nonprofit boards. In all of those experiences, executive sessions were critical to the responsible and intelligent activity of the boards involved. This prohibition on executive sessions in the city of Littleton is anomalous. I think it ties your hands. I think it acts against the interests of the citizens at large. I don't want to parse the results of any election that was had in this regard. I also served on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the city charter. And I can tell you that, in my personal opinion, this prohibition in the city council was imposed on the recommendations that you received. It did not grow out of the general recommendations and consensus of the charter, Citizens Charter I think you should keep that in mind. You really need to be able to act within this, you know, within the confines of the Colorado statute. I've always found responsible boards strictly, scrupulously observant of those restrictions, and acting in goodwill. I don't see any hidden agendas in your bringing this forward at this time. But I would urge you to please vote for this amendment to the city charter.
Thank you, Stu. Next is Lynda Nifinki.
Good evening again, Lynda Nifinki, Fourth District. Boy, this really takes us back to the Dark Ages. The reason why this came about is that there was a lot of abuse on city council for calling executive sessions when the state law wouldn't require you to go into an executive session. So it's, and it's, the charter language says that an executive session may be called, this is section 27 of the council meetings, may be called for the following reasons and no other. So I hear what Steve Kemp was saying, and I heard what everybody else was saying, but I think you really need to keep this to see how it works, because it's only been approved in, there was one vote in 2013, and the election of 2015, it really limited the scope. But it's what the voters' intent was in December 2015. I mean, this was the intent of the voter, and I think you have to maintain the intent, because otherwise, then you start losing credibility with the voters. And I think at this time of, this time, this political time, it's not good to lose credibility. It's like slapping the voters in the face, saying, yeah, we're going to restrict executive sessions. Now you're saying, oh, yeah, well, we want to go free rein here. So anyways, thank you, and have a good evening.
The next speaker is Jerry Hill. Jerry, did you want to talk?
May I?
You bet.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Clock is running, Jerry.
You heard me. My name's Jerry Hill. I live at 5994 South Prince. I've lived through smoke-filled rooms where they made the decisions. I've always felt like it deprived us voters of the opportunity to see how our elected lawmakers worked and debated in their logic. I know that, as Stu alluded to, that we depend on responsible boards to make these decisions in secret. I don't particularly care for speak-secret meetings. I think that it works excellent, in an excellent fashion, with the people that elected you to keep it in the open. Why not? I can appreciate decisions made in an executive session that are sensitive to employees or to people. I can appreciate negotiations, sensitive negotiations, in private, when you're dealing in property, buying property or selling property. I can appreciate all that. I would strongly urge you to, let's keep it as open as it is. As 70% or many, many people evaluated and said, do we want open sessions, or do we want closed sessions? It certainly would expedite things if we had closed sessions and just said, number 27, how about number 27? Yes, we're all in favor of number 27, 23, 22, and 14. I think that it should be, you're elected to make the decisions. We'd like to see you make them, and you make some good, valid decisions out in the open. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. That's who have signed up. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Carol.
Okay, I'm Carol Brezak. I live in the Fourth District. If this is truly a change in our charter that's been forwarded to the council by our attorney, Mr. Kemp, with all due respect, I would say to Mr. Kemp, this is what the citizens asked for, and we would like for you to accommodate the decision that the voters made. If it's not brought to you by Mr. Kemp, then my apologies. I've watched council for years. I have never seen a lawsuit voted on and settled by a council. And I know they do settle lawsuits, because I've asked for the record. I can't do it, Carol. Can't see you. I believe that this change, it did come about because there was abuse. We were getting almost as many exec sessions as we had meetings, and exec sessions with multiple reasons for being discussed. I've had the mayor tell me that she, the council, was very different in an exec session than they are a public. Well, I like the public council. I like to see decisions made publicly. I think the change has actually served us well. We've had a city manager be fired, and it was done tastefully. It was difficult, but in the end, the citizens were not left guessing, trying to understand why a city manager had been fired. We've hired a city manager in a very open process, and that actually, I think, benefited the community as well. We got to see it happen. The negotiations on the South Metro fire, if that had not been done the way it was done, the community would have gotten this agreement, like, maybe a few days before it became public for you to vote on, on the first reading. And as Mr. Valdez said, he learned a lot about the agreement because of my correspondence with him, because I had the opportunity to really dig into the agreement and understand it. All of that goes away if you start closing the doors again. And I really believe it has benefited this community to see our council people make the decisions that need to be made, and we're not reading in the newspaper anymore. Literally, I have a little collection of articles where a council member has told the press that the decision they made... the press that the decision they made in an executive session was. So I'm afraid it's been abused too much, and so the privilege needed to be removed. And that's it.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, would anybody else like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 8:45. Counsel, any additional questions? Counselmember Elrod?
One of the, I don't know if this is a question, let's see. One of the gaps that I believe to have identified here was that I'm also going to be proposing as an amendment is going into an executive session, there was no criteria around the vote of council. And something that we take very seriously is the majority of counsel for serious concerns or emergency ordinances, et cetera. So that language was not explicit here for executive sessions. And I do believe that by matter of practice and speaking to some former council members that there, when going into an executive session, by practice, it was essentially a supermajority. So that is something that right now I see as a gap, and I want to verify with the attorney that, in fact, there is no stipulation of a council vote on when to go into executive session.
Counselmember Elrod, members of the council, that's correct. Right under state law, it's simply a majority of the council, but there's nothing that would preclude a council from saying, "If we amend the charter," that it would be a supermajority. And in fact, the city charter does that for, as you'll recall, recently, the council enacted an emergency ordinance, and it was one plus a majority of the quorum. And there's nothing in the charter that would preclude you from doing the same here.
Counselmember Cole?
Is there a reason that this could, these issues could not be put on a ballot for citizens?
In terms of these changes, they would go on the ballot. Counselmember Cole, members of the council, if this, if you submit these, you're not enacting these. This ordinance, unlike most of your ordinances, you're simply referring it to the voters. So it will be the voters who make the decision.
But it would be each individual change would be a separate vote?
That would be a decision for the council to make. I struck, Counselmember Cole, I structured it because it was just a single amendment to this section, but certainly council could do it that way if council so chose.
And it was council's direction to staff to do that?
I would be inclined to follow that lead, Peggy. I think this is a serious enough change to the charter to take that back to vote. It's been, you know, four or five years now since we've had it. I think it's needed. The fire situation was clearly a reason to have executive session, but I would, I'd be curious to see if the opinion has changed of the city.
Anybody else?
I just mentioned, not to the attorney, but to follow up with the emails being sent. I did read all the emails on this, and I just wanted the council to know that email from another former council member, Bill Hopping, was sent late this afternoon to me, and I forwarded on to the city clerk. I just wanted to make sure you guys all saw that and that he was, it's sitting behind your iPad there, Peggy. Just to summarize that reinstate an executive sessions would enable council to work more effectively for our citizens in an honest manner, and he urges us to support them. So I just wanted to get that on record.
Counselmember Elrod?
I have a further clarification for the attorney. Under item number four, conference with the attorney for legal advice. So right now, the language is limited in item number two. It's limited for legal action already filed, so in essence, a lawsuit.
Yes.
And the, what four, in this case, allows us to do is be able to meet in an executive session prior to, and hopefully be able to maybe address or mitigate the risk of an actual suit coming to play.
Counselmember Elrod, members of the council, that's correct. The classic example of this is the city receives a claim, and in looking and evaluating the claim, it's clear that the city has some liability. And the claim is above the settlement level I have under the city charter, and it's above the settlement level the manager has under the city charter. Right now, there is no way to sit down and discuss that with you as a body and say, "You know, counsel, I am very concerned about this claim. Yes, we can litigate it, but I'm concerned that if we litigate it, we're going to roll up costs and fees and discovery cost, and we might be able to settle this claim for slightly more than the city manager's approval authority and avoid that risk." And that would be exactly where this would come into play.
Counselmember Cole?
So even with that, is there no reason to think citizens wouldn't be able to evaluate that, and they have the power to vote? I mean, not on an individual claim, but to make the changes to the charter?
Well, Counselmember Cole, if you refer this to the voters, they would be voting on all of these changes to Section 27 as a single ballot item.
Why?
That was the direction you provided me in the study session.
I know, but since we now have seen all this.
You'd like to make an amendment to do something different than you can.
I know, well, right now?
No, we haven't had a motion yet.
You don't have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to clarify so I know how, whether I want to vote one way or another way. So it is possible to submit these as 4,200 different things.
Counselmember Cole, you could certainly make an amendment once a motion is on the floor to do that. And you could submit them, and that would, we're dealing with four, so we'd be increasing the ballot items by four.
I have a question about the active shooter. Paragraph one there.
Yes.
It seems that the, and this is a question that's going to sound like a statement, but it seems like the assumption there is that council members cannot receive training about dealing with an active shooter individually. And that puzzles me because I see that there isn't a decision really for council to make about how to deal with an active shooter because we don't have the expertise. Somebody else has the expertise, kind of like when we got IT training about how to stay safe on the computer. Somebody else, experts had already, I'm getting to the question, had already determined that, and they were sharing that information with us individually. What is different about active shooter that makes it so council needs to decide?
Counselmember, fellow members of the council, what I would submit makes it different is that sadly, in our society, right now, you are at risk. You could have a disgruntled, we don't have metal detectors, we don't.
That's not the question.
The point is, is that you as a group in this room right here, there could be a benefit to discussing this issue with you as a group versus discussing it one-on-one.
And why?
And why? Simply because you can discuss it in terms of a real life situation with you as a group in a council meeting having to address this. And I would tell you, there isn't a lot of these discussions that occur. It might be once every couple of years, but it is something that if the unthinkable happens, it becomes incredibly important.
And where do we get our expertise so that we know what to decide to do?
We would certainly have folks like the police chief. He might even bring someone else in if he felt that was important, but we would certainly have the appropriate professionals in to discuss what would occur.
Counselmember Lecter?
Just have a follow-up on that. And I think it's more, at least in my mind, is if we're all here together getting training, and maybe the public works director would have something to add about the, you know, being in the facility here, if we were all told to go left or go right, having that information in the public would be detrimental to our safety and the safety of people at the meeting and employees here.
What I was thinking of is we could receive that training individually. We wouldn't, that's where I was coming from. That was why, question of why that couldn't happen.
And I think Mr. Reister can add something to this.
Keith Reister, Public Works Director. I also have the facilities. This specific question, I can actually speak to very specifically. In another jurisdiction, somewhere else in the country, there was a shooting in a council chamber where they shot council members, public works director, actually, was the first person they shot. And we made specific security changes to the counselor's dais so that in the event of an active shooter event, there was protection for council. We did not want to sit out and discuss that in a public setting because an active shooter would know where the defense system was and could choose to take someone out. It, I mean, that's, and so we went into executive session to discuss the safety measures, not in a public setting. So that's an example that I was personally involved in along this line.
And that would be more effective to do as a group in person rather than individually, one-on-one?
I mean, you know, I mean, dealing with an active shooter situation, I mean, this council chamber has some significant issues. We all know that. So if we were going to have an evacuation plan for you, for members of the audience, for staff, you know, if someone comes in here, we'd rather not have them know that because it's just going to, they're going to choose a position that's going to be even more dangerous for everyone. So, you know, those are, those are the things you go through, and, you know, you have to make those choices when, you know, we have a very unhardened building, to use the technical term. So, I mean, that's how we would look at training for any situation, whether it's us or schools or anybody else.
Counselmember Elrod?
Sorry. I have a clarifying question to Carol's comment, or question that she had asked. She had asked, "Would we as council be making decisions on security measures versus or through experts?" And as I'm reading the ordinance, and I'm asking for this clarification from you, as I'm reading it, it's to discuss matters of security, but we, I am not equipped to make a decision on security. So I just want to make that specific clarification that in this scenario, we are discussing the security arrangements, not making a decision on them.
Counselmember Elrod, members of the council, that's correct. The reason for this would be discussion. Obviously, based on that discussion, you hire a professional staff here, and your professional staff would then take that discussion. And we, in other cities I've been in, we actually developed a specific security plan for the council chambers and for council meetings that we then came back and discussed with the council. But we obtained your input because obviously that's an important piece of this discussion.
Any other questions? Okay, need a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance on second reading amending city charter Section 27 regarding city council meetings. Director?
We have a motion and a second discussion.
As I alluded to, I think there's still some additional language that's more into on here, but before I start, some of the comments that were shared tonight and that I've also heard from citizens and neighbors of, you know, recollecting when this came in front of citizens before. So what we heard tonight was the intent of this was to cut down on excessive, on an excessive number of executive sessions that were conducted at that time. We had heard that there had been abuse, and that the intent of that language that was proposed was to be very targeted and limited. And as I look at what we are doing now, we are actually continuing in that spirit because what we are proposing is targeted and limited under certain scenarios. When we talk about security, it's about public safety. When we talk about the sale of property, it's about, it's again, very specific, and it ensures that we can be good stewards and responsible stewards of our taxpayers. And in the case of personnel, it's about being ethical, fair, ensuring we don't expose ourselves to any legal risks because there's so many complicated laws around employment law, discrimination, et cetera. So we really are trying to be very responsible stewards of our community in these decisions. The gap, or I think the opportunity that still exists for us is to, in fact, honor some of the concerns that have existed in the past about abuse. I think one further action that we can take this evening is to ensure that as a council, the council we are today and the council that will come in the future, that this executive sessions are taken very seriously and limited that could be supported by a supermajority vote. So mayor, is, shall I hold my amendment at this time, or should I propose an amendment?
I would go ahead and propose your amendment.
Okay. The amendment that I'm proposing would be to add language on page two of the ordinance, line seven, where it starts, actually, it's line six, where it starts, "An executive It currently reads, "An executive session may be called in accordance with CRS 246402." I would like to add an amendment there where it starts, "An executive session under this section may only be held by a majority vote of a quorum present plus one vote."
Do we have an amendment and a second? I have a question on that. Is there a reason that we want to phrase it, "A quorum present plus one vote," as opposed to a supermajority or something that may be more clear?
Mayor Brinkman, members of the council, the reason I recommended that language is that's the same identical language we have in the charter right now for emergency ordinances, which it recognizes a quorum of the council is four. So in essence, you have to have a quorum plus one vote. It ensures that there would be, in most cases, it would take five votes to have an executive session. We could simply say five. It's just that because we had this language elsewhere in the charter, I simply recommended carrying it over so it'd be consistent. But if the council was just to say five votes, but keep in mind, if you had six, seven members of the council there, a quorum would be four, and you'd need five. If you had six present, like tonight, you would still need five.
So we would need five, you would need a quorum plus five of members of council, not members present?
Well, right now, if you look at the charter for what it says for emergency ordinances, it says what a quorum, which is a quorum is a majority of the council present. Tonight, a quorum is four because three is not a majority. So you would need four plus one equal five. So you would need five out of six. If you just want to say five, then it would be five out of six or five out of seven. You could simply do that.
So either way, a council meeting with only four members could not go into an executive session?
Yes, because essentially, a quorum of the council is four. So to have an executive session at four, it's a quorum plus one. So you have to have at least five present.
Okay. Counselmember Cole?
But if we had certain kinds of situation and only the required minimum of, you know, the lower number were present, why wouldn't we want to allow? the lower number were present, why wouldn't we want to allow the majority of that number? I mean, if we're dealing with some kind of emergency?
Councilmember Cole, I simply, for the purposes of this, I followed the existing language in the charter. Yes, you could, I suppose you could argue that if you only had four present and four voted for an emergency ordinance, you should be able to do it. But that's not what our charter says. Our charter says it's a quorum plus one. So that's why I carried this language over. And that's just, but it's a policy call for you. The, the city attorney doesn't decide charter amendments, the council does.
Well, it could be then and, and either or, right? If, I'm not saying that's right, but again, this, this is gonna, this would go to the citizens for approval. Is that right? If, if we do this, we would, we would submit this to the citizens, or we could. So if, if we, if we're in an emergency and only four can be present, that's one thing. If more are present, then we could have wording that would require a majority of those present, whichever is greater.
Certainly, Councilmember Cole, you could provide that four of a present, a unanimous vote could allow for an executive session. I would tell you, I think in my experience here, I have not had a council meeting where only four of you have been present. But you-
We're talking about potential situations.
Yes.
I mean- Madam Mayor, may I call the question? We've had a motion to call the question. It does not require a second, but it does require a majority vote of council. Counsel, call the question means we in discussion and vote on the amendment. A yes vote ends the discussion and would take us straight to the amendment.
I'm sorry, a yes vote ends the discussion?
A yes vote ends the discussion on the amendment.
The vote is five in favor with Councilmember Elrod voting no. The motion carries five to one.
Okay. Now we need to vote on the amendment.
Okay. So is my motion clear?
Yeah.
So we need a second.
City Clerk, would you mind repeating the amendment?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Elrod moved and Councilmember Schlechter seconded to amend the main, sorry, to amend the main motion to amend ordinance number 25-2018 by adding the following language to page two, line seven, at the end of the sentence, "An executive session under this section may not be held by a majority of a quorum present," or may be held by a quorum present plus one vote.
Wendy, if you could repeat that, because-
Sorry, I typed it wrong from what he, what you all wrote me. I'll start with, to amend the main motion to amend ordinance number 25-2018 by adding the following language to page two, line seven, at the end of the sentence. This is what you'd add. "An executive session under this section may be held by a majority of a quorum present plus one vote."
I have a, I think that was incorrect. It was "may only be held."
Executive session under this section may-
Only.
Only be held.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ready to vote?
The vote is five in favor with Councilmember Driscoll voting no. The motion carries five to one.
Okay, so we have an amended motion. Additional discussion, questions? Councilmember Schlechter.
To kind of follow up what Councilmember Elrod said, that the word free rein on executive sessions was brought up during public comment. And I, I don't think that this proposed, these proposed changes allow free rein. I do think they're very pointed and very specific. I think having executive sessions for security arrangements is important. You don't want to, you know, give up the plans, you know, to combat that. For negotiations, I think it's very ineffective for the city and for the citizens to show all your cards right away upfront. I think for legal advice is very important. Confidentiality of, of us getting legal advice, giving feedback to the attorney is important. And then for personnel discussions is, is just a responsible way to govern and manage our direct hires here. So I think this is a very reasonable and responsible amendment to the charter that we will put forward to the citizens to give the ultimate say on.
Other comments or questions? I have a few comments regarding this. I wanted to clarify a couple of things real quickly. I think Mr. Maher mentioned that, that this was not from the Citizens Charter Committee, and he is correct. This, this, it was also mentioned that this, was this brought by city attorney Steve Kemp? And no, it was not. I brought this to council. And I brought it to council because I think that the admission, or the omission of the privilege of exec sessions has been detrimental to council in a number of circumstances, which I, I am not going to go into detail on those at this point. And I brought it also to council because I believe that there needs to be a reconsideration by the community to restore the privilege of exec sessions. You know, we don't run for election and set up here because we want to try to destroy this community, or we want to try to do things that we shouldn't, or we want to go into secret meetings and make decisions outside of the view of the public. We do this really for a whole bunch of really good reasons, and we do it at the sacrifice of a whole lot of things because we believe in this community and we want to take this community, we want to work with this community on making this community better in every way. We don't always agree on what that looks like, and we shouldn't always agree on what that looks like. But if you ask everybody in this room, and if you ask everybody in this community, and we have and we still continue to do, what do you love about it? If they gave you five things, we would all overlap on at least one or two of these. So we have a lot more in common than we have in differences. The loss of the exec sessions has caused what the campaign against our exec sessions, when it was taken to the voters, the verbiage was no secret meetings. Well, we didn't have secret meetings. There may have been a perception of what was going on. There may have been, I probably wouldn't argue that there were too many exec sessions. I would argue that there were decisions being made in them. I was in every one of them and decisions weren't made. I don't, during the time that we were having a number of exec sessions, we were also doing an awful lot of land purchase. And we were also dealing with a lot of personnel issues. And so things kind of collided at a particular time and, and we were dealing with those. I think that, and it was mentioned earlier, that exec sessions are critical to the responsibility that the council has for responsible decision-making. We don't receive information in an exec session that has anything to do with other, that, anything except dealing with the concerns of the community, the safety of the community, the fiduciary responsibility we have to the public's money, the responsibility that we have to have all of the information that we need for every decision that we make. And when we have to make decisions where we do not have adequate information because we did not have the opportunity to have a evenness of information from our city attorney in an exec session, where we were given information, had the opportunity to ask questions back, and then have a conversation with each other, walk out of the exec session, come back to a council meeting, and take a vote, make a public decision. Not having that opportunity is actually harming the community. An exec session for a city council is an additional meeting. It's an elongation of your evening. The opportunity for an exec session is better decision-making, and that is done publicly. You can't, there's information that may need to be gathered for specific purposes. They're very detailed. I appreciate the city attorney going the extra mile to be very restrictive. We were very, very intentional when we went through our study session and we verbalized and, and spoke with the city attorney about what we wanted in here. We wanted a stricter, we wanted to be stricter than the state. We wanted that because we understand the privilege of an exec session and we want to honor the community's message that they want us to recognize that as they have. I do think on the, there was a comment made about the, the personnel, that that, not having an exec session to deal with personnel issues. And the, that was actually probably one of the, that is one of the greatest reasons to have an exec session. You're dealing with a personal issue on a personnel of your, of, of our employee. It is not a public issue. Council is a public body. Staff are in a public arena, but their personnel issues are personnel. It also was incredibly damaging to our opportunity to recruit a replacement, and it will continue to be. We heard from our recruiter and we heard from a number of the people who had applied, that having all of this done in open session is very unfavorable. These people that are applying for these jobs are, they do not want to apply publicly. They're currently employed. There's a whole lot of reasons. They all make sense. I'm not going to go through the detail. I'm just going to say that I, I do believe that that is a solid, that, that that was incredibly damaging and that, that returning those. Let me also just add, we just did a review of the city manager and the city attorney. We had to do that one-on-one. There was no evenness of conversation amongst this council. This council did not have an opportunity to sit in a room and talk about their appointments and discuss the pros and the cons, the pluses and the minuses. That was not done. It was one-on-one with a facilitator, and that is no way to handle the public's business. A comment was made threatening votes, threatening and bullying. You know what? I'll be honest with you. I'm getting real tired of that. We don't make decisions because someone's threatened to not put us back in this seat. We make decisions because we're doing the best for this community. If you don't like it, don't put us back up here. But taking away our tools and then holding them over our head is not the way that the elected bodies should be treated and that the public should be reacting. There are ways that processes can be followed, and I believe that having the exec sessions returned to a decision by this community is a fair thing to do. Oftentimes, and it quite, happens quite often, you can look it up, initiatives, citizens' initiatives, and I respect them, believe me, I've led them, are often brought back to the citizens. There's different reasons why they may change their mind. A different political climate, maybe something else has happened in the community that changed the citizens' mind, but it gives them an opportunity. If the citizens look at this on the ballot and they decide that they don't want us to have them, then they get to make that decision and we get to continue to live with that. But I think this council is doing it an in-service to our decision-making and our representation of this community by not asking for the privilege of these exec sessions back with the strict and rigid limitations that we have requested be applied to these ballot questions. Clearly, I'm passionate about this. This is important to me because policymaking and governance is key and vital, and being able to do that with all of the appropriate and given tools that we need to be able to do that is, is important. And I think that this council has earned the opportunity with fair, honest, open debate consistently in our study sessions at our dais. And the transparency that this community is executing is incredible. You go on our website and you can find out everything, anytime, anywhere. We are televising more than we've ever televised. We have documents public more than we have ever done. There is, the word transparency doesn't even do justice to how far we have gone because we understand the value to the community in that, and we will continue to do that. We will continue to support every effort that, that we need to, to do that. And I'm a little disappointed that Channel Eight is, has failed us at this point. So, but we, so, I'm sorry. I'm rambling a bit. I'll conclude my comments. And as counsel, too, can we repeat the motion?
I just had one follow-up to your comment there where you mentioned our benefit. This isn't to our benefit. This is to a benefit for council, for future councils, and for the future of the city. You have two former council members that have no bearing on this testifying publicly that this is a benefit to the community and not for us.
Correct.
So I just wanted to get that out there.
Correct.
Okay. This is to approve the ordinance on second reading, amending city charter section 27 regarding council meetings as amended.
Ready to vote?
Question, clarification. So if we want to ask the citizens to approve this?
That's what this does. It puts it on the ballot.
Okay, I would, I didn't, so can we repeat the, the motion?
You want the, me to repeat the amended motion?
Whatever it is we're voting on.
Okay. We are, or you are voting on, motion to approve the ordinance on second reading, amending the city charter section 27 regarding council meetings as amended. And the amendment is by adding, by adding the following language to page two, line seven, at the end of the sentence, it will read, "An executive session under this section may only be held by a majority of a quorum present plus one vote."
I, I, is what's, I have a question for Councilmember Cole. Is what's throwing you off that the previous four charter amendments had, and referring the amendment to the voters of the city of Littleton in the November 6, 2018 election was there, but it's not written on this one? Is that what's?
We're approving the ordinance that states that.
Right.
That states, this, this will get referred to the citizens.
Yes.
Okay. And that's what, I wanted to make sure what I'm doing here.
No, you've got it.
It was throwing me off too, so I'm glad you said that.
You got it.
Yep.
Yes. Okay, ready to vote?
The vote is five in favor with Councilmember Fay voting no. The motion carries five to one.
Okay, that takes us to report, city manager.
I have nothing further tonight.
Deputy City Manager.
Thank you.
City Attorney?
Mayor, council, I have nothing to add.
Okay. We'll start with Councilmember Elrod.
We are having lots of Dr. Cog, Demo Regional Council of Government meetings, Arapahoe Transportation Forum, Jefferson County, Douglas County. So we are approaching the phase of submitting projects. So that is well underway. We are, as I've said before, is Littleton is in a very good position. And in all of the various forums that I've been attending, there is a good collaboration support for projects specific to Littleton, in particular, the Pell Study for Santa Fe. So again, continue to feel very confident that that will be presented actually as a regional project. And we also have the opportunity to- And we also have the opportunity to present several projects in subregional later on in the year. So we're in a really strong position for the city to really begin to study, understand, and address some of our transportation and traffic concerns.
Council member Elrod, quick question. Have they had any conversations about federal monies that may be available over the next number of years?
Say that again.
Have they had any conversations about the federal monies that may be available over the next five years?
Yes, let me think for a second. No, it's not coming into the, there is additional money that became available that is for, specifically for multimodal, so that is new money that's going into the pot, or additional money that's going into the pot. And so, again, there is more opportunity for more comprehensive projects, and more complete projects, or more projects to bring to the table.
Okay, thank you. Council member Fay?
District 3 citizen meeting, we had, about a week ago, July 21st, had 62 people attended. And that was quite possibly because the speaker was Harriet Lamar from the High Line Canal Executive, she's the executive director of the High Line Canal Conservancy, there we go. And she talked about the fact that there will be water in the canal. I've said that before here, and I just have to say it again and again, because it is so exciting that that is going to happen. And then, I have been attending meetings held under the heading of envision for Littleton. We have a consultant team that is going around and talking with various, well, main thing is listening, to various citizen groups, business groups, employee groups, all kinds of groups. So I attended seven of them. They are all very different, and I encourage any individuals who haven't been included in any of those to be sure that you do an online survey or something to get your voice in there about what you envision for the future of Littleton.
Thank you. Council member elector?
Two quick comments. I would just like to let the public know that next week, on August 15th, is City Hall Selfie Day.
Oh.
This is a fun event put on by the ELGL, which is the Engaging Local Government Leaders Group, and it's just a way to promote local governments. They encourage you to take selfies at city hall, at city buildings, with your city staff and city council members. So I just want to get that out there, everyone to participate.
Selfies.
Yeah. And then another bit of positive news, that the delegation from Vega, Australia, will be coming here on August 9th and spending 10 days with us in Littleton on the Front Range. And there's a Welcome at Vega Park, 3:30 to 4:30 on August 9th. So, let the people know that.
Thank you. Council member Driscoll?
On top of that, we had a great weekend this weekend. Saw some of you down at the Littleton Criterion. I hope you had a good time. In addition, we got a concert this Saturday down at Vega Park, and I look forward to seeing everybody down at Western Welcome Week. I will be, nope, that's later down, I'll save that for another time, the Oktoberfest.
You're excited about that. Council member call.
Yeah, so the library reported last week at their meeting, the library board, the library reported to the board, the summer outreach stuff dealing with young people is going gangbusters. They have this incredible program where the kids go and find X, Y, and Z around the community or whatever, and I think I'm saying that right, but whatever it is, it is bringing in, the kids are very much engaged, and they essentially think ran out of stuff, so they have to get more stuff to give the kids. But maybe just finding stuff in the library, that's the piece. Whatever it is, it's, but I can't describe, because I've got my head on all this other stuff we dealt with. They were so enthused about it, and it may require, it may involve asking for a little more money in their budget next year. What it's doing is, it's involved with reading skills, so they have to be able to do something that involves, requires reading, specific reading kinds of things. And they're incredible, whatever it is. If I had children, or grandchildren, or great-grandchildren, I'd know it in detail.
You can borrow mine.
Thank you.
They're available.
Kids for rent. Thank you very much. I have a couple comments. I want to echo council member Driscoll's comment on the Criterion, and I want to just do a shout-out to everybody on staff who had anything to do with that. From the first year that we did that, we started the Criterion, which was six years ago, to this year, it is, the evolution is amazing. And, you know, we had the yellow police tape along the streets to keep the bystanders back, and now they have the professional block, you know, blocks up that are all covered in sponsorship banners. And local, I would say over 90% of those sponsorships were from our local community, our merchants and our businesses that are supporting this. And you could, the first race, you could probably count the people on the street, and this past Saturday, it was three or four, five deep. The racers, after talking to the promoters and the organizers, the racers, this is one of their favorite races, and they've always told us that, the field of racers has more than doubled, and they're coming from all over the country, but because we have such a high density of cycling interest in Colorado, they're really happy when they can race at home. Most of them were headed out that night to go across country to go to another race, and so, this was our first national race, we were televised nationally, their staff had ads on the Tour de France telecast, there were, it was, it was, it was great. It's a, it's a really, really cool message for Littleton to send out there. It's a neat activity, and it's really grown in popularity, and I really hope we continue to support it. And again, thank you to staff, that was, I don't even, I can't even imagine the work that went into that, but it sure did look effortless, so that was great. I have a couple of things that I wanted to talk briefly, get council to consider, a request to have this brought back to us at another time. We're dealing right now with some issues concerning a gun store and a shooting range that was not something that we ever expected, it was not something we anticipated in code or in planned developments when they were designed and constructed 20, 30 years ago, when some of these neighborhoods were being planned out. So, a lot of those community concerns are really around safety, as well as they should be, and certainly one of our main priorities is safety, safety of our community. So, I would like council to bless, or support, asking the city attorney and staff to put a little bit of research into a couple of issues that they could bring back for us at a study session, that we maybe would like to consider. One would be, if we should consider some amendments to our zoning code, that the city would provide more specific definitions for gun ranges, modifying, what would it mean to modify some of the land use charts, zoning requirements, in order to, to address that type of capability, that type of use? Currently, the use is indoor recreation, and it's not specified out shooting range. And so I think if there was, to look at that a little bit further, in order to maybe prevent some of the confusion and problem that we're seeing today. The second one would be to consider amending the city code to regulate some of the operational practices of a retail gun store, such as lighting, safety, security measures. We currently do not have anything that's real specific to a gun store, and I think that the, we're seeing an opportunity where we may be able to provide some additional safety to the community with some measures that can be taken, which currently don't exist and would be considered voluntary by a retail operator. This would be in much the same way that we handled the medical marijuana, and that was prior to, prior to them being, or, it was, we had four that were permitted, and we were able to put some specifics on, on their use, including lighting and security and those types of things. So, at this point, it would be asking you to kind of consider those two, those two items, bring back some information to us at a study session, and we could have a discussion. So, just looking for council's support of that. Any comments or questions?
Fully support that.
Okay.
I have a comment on, I think this brings up yet another example of the imperative and need for us to really address our code. We keep getting these one-off, I don't want to call them one-offs, but something we didn't realize could happen. And so, again, for me, it is just critical that we continue on our path with the vision, the comp plan, the code, so that we can begin to address these things proactively, as opposed to reactively when something flares up. So, again, I just look at this as yet another example of where we've just not gotten ahead of where we are as a society and community.
Council member Fay?
Thank you for bringing that up. I support it very much.
Thank you. And then I have one last one. Earlier this year, obviously, council adopted an ordinance that provides for capital projects fund, that would use the sales tax money previously used for fire, so the, you know, it's actually the mill levy, 3.1, well, let's just say the money, for fire, for necessary street improvements, and the voters, and we moved for the unification and included this in the conversation. And I think that we've had a citizen concern regarding the ballot language. The ballot language is South Metro's language, it is their election. So we can't change that. Our Resolution 14 details very specifically with the transfer of the $3.1 million, and how we would handle that accounting. But I think it lacks layman clarity. I've read it and read it, and I still need to, you know, slow down the read, and I don't think that's the intention of what we're trying to do. We're not trying to confuse people. But most ordinance, as is their nature, have to be written specifically for, in legal senses. So, since we're approaching the budget, I think adding some clarity and certainty to our intention, the council's intention, to use this money specifically for road needs is an important message. And I think we should make that as loud and clear as we can. And I recognize that an ordinance can be changed by another council. So what we do in ordinance in two years or in next month could change. However, it does require, obviously, first, second reading, public hearing. I think that there's also a very, very high political risk to reverse this type of ordinance, where we're actually asking permission to move money into a specific community need. I just would kind of like to secure that with the budget process, and to be, bring, I talked to the city attorney a bit about this, he did recommend a policy statement the council makes specifically, as we are going into the budget, that is very clear to staff, this is the direction, this is the policy direction, and if it is to be changed, it will be changed by another council. I don't know that that is as powerful as perhaps having it as a ballot issue, or something like that, but at this point, that, we don't have those options. So, I would just suggest, if council's interested, that the city attorney could bring back some language, that we could then, and then the methodology that we would employ that for the budget hearings, and that would probably be something we would vote on when we approve the budget. Comments from council, questions? City attorney could probably answer those questions.
May I, council, I'd be pleased to do that, and bring you back a resolution adopting a statement of budget policy. This is frequently done in local governments, and that's staying up, and we'll bring that back to you.
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So if there is no other business this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you.